My name is, uh, my name is Dan Carney and it's once again my distinct privilege to be able to serve as the chairman of this, this Board of Trustees. This is, this is a meeting of the Board of Trustees of Weatherford College being held Thursday, May the eighth, twenty twenty-five, twelve thirty P M. In the community room of the emerging technologies and workforce building, two twenty-five College Park Drive, Weatherford, Texas, to consider and act upon a posted agenda. Attending here today and participating in the deliberations will also be Vice Chairman Doug Dowd, Secretary Lila Morris, Dr. Robert Marlett, and Dr. Trev Dixon, and Mr. G B Bailey. I do call this meeting for order. Ms. Baker, would you do an invocation for us?
Happy to.
Thank you, sir.
Please bow with me. Lord, we're thankful again to you for a wonderful academic year that is starting to wrap up. We thank you for all the students you brought our way and all the students you bring in our way for next year. We pray you can protect them until we see them again, and you protect those that couldn't be with us today. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Okay, sir. All who are able, please rise. I'll lead you through the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please, Mr. Chair. Item number two on the posted agenda is public comment. Just worry, I understand we have someone today?
I have some.
Okay, Mr. Cord Dewis. Mr. Dewis, please come forward and make your comments, sir.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Cord Dewis, and I've been a student at Weatherford College since twenty twenty-one, following my separation from the United States Navy. I come before you today not to provide answers, but to leave you with a question, one that has echoed through my entire time here. Why? Throughout my life, I've encountered many opportunities to lead, but few true mentees. That is why I feel compelled to speak today about someone whose guidance has profoundly shaped not only my education, but also my professional development and personal growth. Dr. Philip Matthews. Leadership is often defined, in its simplest form, as a process of influence. But what defines a good leader? I believe the answer is closer than we think. If you've walked these grounds as I have over the last four years, you've seen the signs of leadership in action. The meditation garden near the Veterans Services Center, the memorial bench dedicated to Texas Trooper Russell Lynn Boyd. These are not just campus landmarks, they are the result of community leadership led by students, veterans, professionals who were inspired by a shared mentor, Dr. Matthews. I stand here today not just for myself, but for the many students who could not be here yet share his deep appreciation. I speak on behalf of those who were challenged, encouraged, and transformed by a professor who modeled what it means to lead with integrity and care. I speak for those who have not yet had the opportunity to learn from his guidance and leadership that has already shaped so many of us. So again, I ask, why? Why would a professor so committed to developing future leaders choose to step away? Why would he resign just weeks before another cohort reaches the finish line, only three credit hours to graduation? Why can't a professor choose to teach, to mentor, to lead from the classroom without also being required to lead administratively as an apartment chair? I don't pretend to know the answers, but I do believe these questions deserve to be asked. Leadership is both a privilege and a burden. It asks us not only to act, but to reflect, and do what we believe is right even when the path is uncertain. So, I'll leave you with a question that brought me here today. Why? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Item number three on the posted agenda is the President's report. Dr. Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a, a few brief recognitions, employee notices, and an enrollment update. Recognizations. What a year in W C Athletics. Baseball, softball, men's tennis, women's tennis, men's golf, and women's golf are all nationally ranked. As a reminder, W C volleyball returned to the national tournament again last fall. Additionally, W C rodeo has qualified student athletes for the college national finals rodeo in Casper, Wyoming, for the twenty-first consecutive year. Go Kios! The seventh annual Weatherford College International Piano Competition concluded this past weekend. The initial round of competition saw participation from more than two hundred pianists representing twenty-five countries from around the globe. Contestant Hong Chi Chow of Taiwan won the top prize of ten thousand dollars, primarily funded by private gifts and entry fees. For the second year in a row, Weatherford College recently hosted the National Junior College Athletic Association Women's Golf Division One Southwest District Tournament. This is the seventh NJCAA regional district tournament the college has hosted in the last four years. Softball in twenty twenty-two, baseball in twenty twenty-three, volleyball in twenty twenty-three, men's and women's basketball in twenty twenty-four, and women's golf in twenty twenty-four. Such tournaments are an economic boost for area businesses, especially hotels, restaurants, and gas stations. Furthermore, the tournaments boost local sales tax revenue and raise the institutional profile of W C in the process. Employee notices. DMAC requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. Tessa Stroud, an instructor in vocational nursing, has resigned effective five twenty-four twenty-five. Stacy Williams, an administrative assistant, has retired effective five thirty-one twenty-five. Melanie Parker, Assistant Director of Purchasing, resigned effective five twenty-two twenty-five. Erin Garrett, a audiovisual technician, resigned effective four twenty-five twenty-five. Dwayne Duratt, Dean of Fine and Performing Arts, is retiring effective eight thirty-one twenty-five. And Philip Matthews, the Department Chair for Business and Behavioral Science, has resigned effective five twenty-eight twenty-five. We thank Tessa, Stacy, Melanie, Erin, Dwayne, and Philip for their service, and wish them the very best in future endeavors. Enrollment report. With registration for the summer and fall semesters ongoing, year-to-date enrollment for the summer twenty twenty-five semester is currently one thousand nine hundred thirty-two students, a fourteen point eight-six percent increase. An enrollment for the fall twenty twenty-six semester is currently one thousand nine hundred thirty students, a twenty-eight point five percent year-to-date enrollment increase. Mr. Chair, that concludes the President's report.
Thank you very much, President Farmer. Item number four is our consent agenda and financial reports. Those items A through H have been properly posted, and I ask any member of the board, do you have any comment, observation, questions, anything about either any of those items that are posted in item number four? Here. I have one quick. Yes, sir. Where is Ford Audiovisual from? I did not see a address in their quote.
I will have to tell you, I don't know exactly. It's no.
Are they local?
No.
Or not.
They're from the Metroplex.
I'm sorry?
Metroplex.
Any other comments or questions about anything whatsoever? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, would you raise your hand, please? Appears to be unanimous. So approved. Item number five on the agenda is consideration of possible action for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six board meeting dates. Ms. Stoner, I believe you're in charge of that.
Good afternoon, trustees. Before you in your board packets, you've been provided with the recommendation for the board meeting dates for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six this year. The recommended dates consider the holiday schedule in January as well as the college national finals rodeo in June. At your discretion, we approve, modify, or table this recommended meeting dates as presented. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Members of the board, do you have any comments or questions? Should we comment on the change of the August board meeting? I think that'd be appropriate. Uh, there is, uh, there is a proposal. Uh, I guess we need a motion and a, and an approval for that. Would you care to make a motion to change the August meeting date to the August twenty-one date, Mr. Bailey?
I certainly would.
Okay. Could I have a second if there is such?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, raise your hand.
Andrew has a question.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
There will be several required dates in August that will, I mean, a couple of them, three, I know.
Okay.
That are not posted on here.
All right.
And they will be, uh, once we get the, uh, total values and everything in from the tax office, we'll be, we'll have a budget workshop, then we'll have a, the regular meeting normally would be the thirteenth, and then I'm sure there'll be one about the twenty-first for the budget approval on that.
Okay.
With the hearing on that.
You can keep us posted on progress for those meetings as well.
I will.
Okay. Uh, having heard, have a motion and a, do we, and a second, do we have an approval for that, for the August twenty-first?
Yep.
Appears to be unanimous. All right. Thank you, Mr. Cantor. The, uh, next item on the agenda is-
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, sir.
If you choose to take action either to table or to adopt these dates as presented.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Uh, as has been presented by Ms. Stoner, do we have a motion and a second to approve those dates?
Motion.
Mr. Bailey, second?
I'm second.
Second. All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you for catching that, President Farmer. It is so approved for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six board meeting date that has been submitted. Item number six is the reports section by President Farmer. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Provided in your board packets, as usual, we have written reports on W C W C, uh, the academic and student services update, as well as the preliminary twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget report. Dr. Cantor will be bringing you a more in-depth, uh, report later as we move into the summer months. And we actually have two, uh, brief verbal presentations this month, the first of which is Agenda Item Six C, our new student union draft schematic and design. And I'm very proud, uh, to introduce Mr. Mark Berg from Huckabee and Associates to, uh, share some exciting information, uh, with us. So, uh, as Mark comes up and to talk about that, I want to thank the, uh, committee, the Weatherford College Committee, that has worked with Huckabee on the preliminary schematic design. And there'll be a lot of changes to this, but we now have, uh, a first draft of this beautiful, historic, five-story, uh, just outstanding landmark building that Huckabee and Associates has, uh, designed for us. So, Mark, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you very much for adopting the opportunity to come here and document your own schematic design for the new student union. Uh, we're handing out some books right now. Uh, this is a book that we do at each phase of the project. Those of you who are familiar with the program that works is of those three phases.
Thank you.
This is the first, schematic design. We'll come back again during design development. We can have an additional presentation for you and perhaps some thought that you value. So if you see on the, on the first page here, now this is in black and white, and there's a purpose for that. Schematic design is, is pretty loose, and we're still thinking about materials and colors. But in schematic design phase, we're doing a lot more, what does the form look like? What's the shape of the building? Before I go any further, I'm Mark Berg with Huckabee. I'm the principal and architect. Uh, and this is Casey Cass Stevens with Huckabee. He's the main designer. And there's fifty pages in that book. I promise I will go through each one of those. I'll go through this rather quickly so we can get to the, the fun stuff. This shows, um, we have a design committee from the college side that was put together to help make decisions as we met, um, the past four months. We have narrative on site and, uh, the building itself. Little history, we sure already know. Uh, so this shows kind of our designs and concepts as we go through it and meet with the college. Uh, and they range from programming designs, uh, bubble diagrams, what spaces go where, what spaces are next to one another, stacking diagrams, you know, which space makes sense on which And program, we had help from facility planning consultants. Uh, they came in for about six meetings to meet with the committee. Uh, and they come up with a list of all the programs and spaces needed and how many square feet that represents. And these are just a few, we call them precedent images, um, that were, if we looked at, and you recognize one in the bottom right, that was, uh, what image that Dr. Farmer presented at his presidential luncheon. And some more images of what you already know, the workforce building, Durant Hall. Looking at, looking at the scope of the project, uh, about four phases here, four segments. So the first phase is, uh, as I think most of you know, the midst demolition and the premium parking lot that we constructed there now. Second phase, obviously that's the student union, and we're working on that currently. Once the student union is complete, there's items three A and three B, and that's student services and DOS. And that will come down, and the parking lot will take its place. And finally, uh, the number four on the bottom right, you'll see six practice tennis courts. That's, that's a phase one of a, a larger project that we did a conceptual design of, uh, a little while back, tennis center.
Thanks, Mark. As Mark said, my name is Casey Cass Stevens, Director of Design for Fourth Office, and main design, uh, architect for this project. Also attended Weatherford College myself, so it's, uh, it's rather fun to be able to be out on campus and, and doing some work on campus that, and a client that, that you're familiar with, right? So, uh, that's always, uh, good to, to get into. So I want to start with the, uh, the site layout. Obviously, everyone here is, you know, familiar with the large parking lot in the center of campus. The overall thought process is to start developing that into a more desirable entrance to campus, and, and what better than the student union to really take you in, uh, as you enter from the traffic circle, uh, on the east. So, uh, we'll look at, is this, oh, okay, that, that's how it works. So I can guess. Um, so obviously, you see to the right, um, over here, that's where we are today. Uh, and trying to create a context of where this building sits, not only with more of an access that comes up and kind of connects the, uh, both circles, uh, this will be more of a pedestrian area in the future, but try to connect the, the overall entrance with what's going to be more of the center of campus. Uh, with, in the meantime, trying to protect as much parking as we can, uh, rework, uh, the connection to, um, to campus, and how does this work on a daily basis with, with the buildings that are apparently in place. Uh, so overall, this is our footprint of, uh, the new student union. We have the connection, uh, which creates opportunities for outdoor, um, dining, outdoor event space, uh, and in, in kind of trying to imagine all the, the types of spaces that will, um, really happen along that pathway. To the west, we've got the service, uh, and then obviously we've got the drive to the south. Uh, but that's how it's starting to shape up with, um, with how it sits on the site. And really what, what that does is it becomes kind of that front door, uh, to the campus. So we go through the five floors here. We'll go through, uh, fairly quickly and, uh, to be efficient with time. But, uh, I'll start with the first floor. So interesting, actually, let me go back just real quick. Uh, one thing you will see because of the, the hill, the terrain at the side, uh, we will have an entrance down here, kind of on the first, uh, first floor. You will go through kind of lobby in the center. But, uh, from the second, uh, from the back towards the college on the north, you will be able to enter on the second level. So it really will be kind of the split level to take advantage of the terrain and the hillside of that parking lot. So that'll be kind of important as we get into the plans. Um, I usually am up here pointing, so I'm trying to get used to this thing. Um, so we got the lobby here. Uh, that's where you would enter. That's kind of what you saw on access. Uh, really what it does is it creates, uh, kind of a, a small tower on the right and a five-story tower, uh, on the left when you start to kind of see how these are put together. Uh, the main lobby, like I said, runs all the way up as an atrium. Um, on the first floor, we have really more of your student-related kind of new student services. Uh, we've got the welcome center on the right. Uh, let's stairs that go all the way up, uh, to the fifth floor for egress. And to the left, we've got, um, really more of your business, um, and financial and new student registration, uh, as well as your bookstore, uh, as open as that wants to be kind of as you walk in, books, like any kind of thing that represents Weatherford College. Uh, and then that's going to integrate here, uh, with, uh, advising. And what you see here in the plan form, this is a little bit more conceptual than full schematic design as far as interior layouts. We are in development of those spaces, but what you'll see now is kind of the major, major space adjacencies. Where do the, where does this major area want to be in relation to the others? So you'll see a further development of these inner office layouts in, in, uh, design development, but right now it's really more important by getting these larger spaces where they want to live with this five-story building. So second story, uh, is really where, like I said, you, the students who come from campus enter, uh, from that courtyard on the north. There will be exterior dining here and, uh, overall dining cafeteria to the left, uh, that where the service dock is. Uh, that kind of extends all the way down into the south, and then have this kind of walk path, uh, that's more kind of an overlook that connects, um, the third floor and kind of creates this overall volume. So it's not just a single story, it's kind of this overall, uh, field for the, for the dining experience, uh, with, with an overall, uh, a lot of daylight, a lot of, uh, kind of a curtain that faces out to the north to bring in that good light and really trying to create that space. Uh, you'll see more of it in, in design development about these interior spaces. And also, we got wellness, uh, clinic, which will have an access point to the north of the parking lot, and the veteran's center, uh, as part of that as well. Third floor brings in testing, kind of a secluded area that stacks it, um, above. That's kind of a nice location for that. Uh, and then there's kind of that spine of circulation that, that really becomes a student active area on the left, uh, with overlook or connection from the dining to the student game room and student lounge, trying to create that right buzz of activity is really what that, that space is all about. Also, a student, uh, student game room, it kind of, there's a balcony that extends out from the north to overlook the, uh, the courtyard. Fourth floor, uh, is really where it's supposed to be a lot more about the administrative offices and locations. You have the VP suite, you have the staff lounge on the right-hand side of the building here. Uh, over towards the left in that tower, we've got, um, a lot of the administrative offices, which like I said, will be laid out in design development. Um, and then a lot of actual meeting rooms that have flexibility in size. So small, medium, large, but those can be flexibly opened up to larger or smaller spaces. Fifth floor, uh, this is, this is the floor that really has the assembly, uh, space. So it's very similar to this, kind of, the thought process on the floor of this building. Um, what we've got here, we, we have kind of the, the assembly hall, banquet hall with plated dinner for five hundred, um, over here. Um, we do have boardrooms, which will be a fixed dais, and that will, uh, face towards the overall banquet hall with the flexible, uh, wall that will allow that to spill out on larger occasions. As you enter from the, the elevators here, you do have a kind of a landscaped terrace, um, rooftop, kind of a green roof that gives you that view pass. This is still being worked through a little bit right now, so what you see right now is, is slightly conceptual in form, but the thought of bringing in that, uh, that field to that outdoor, uh, of the fifth floor lobby. And on the right, um, here we've got the presidential, uh, dining, and it will be a lot of similarities of what you can see here on the presidential dining, but will be elevated, uh, and a little bit enlarged, uh, for this, with overall, uh, size and aspect of, of how it's finished out. That has its dedicated kitchen and pantry, um, and terrace that is, uh, similar. So like I said, the thought process on this building, but taken to the, the next level. So that really takes us through our five-floor plans and site plan. And as I mentioned before, it is, it kind of a snapshot in time in the dome. And so what we've got now is our major pieces in place as we start to get and dive down into the details, materiality, uh, and that's what Mark will kind of let you know here on the next sheet is kind of the, the visioning process that we went through. Oh, we got the most important part. Um, so, as I mentioned before, we've got this white massing block. We've got, uh, these renderings to show of how it's coming together. And obviously, we did not put Miss Materiali on this at this point. That is a discussion that we do want to meet and take seriously with how detailed we are and where, what goes where. This, at this point, is all about the form and how it's coming together, uh, so we can start to see how that impacts the context of the site and really kind of get that, uh, working with that terrain. So this is the view as you come in from the traffic circle, uh, and that kind of what greets you as you drive up. We do have the kind of B-shaped columns that create a W. And so really, the building form itself starts to be the signage as you drive up. There will be also, we don't show it yet, but there will be a, an area down here that is more of a, um, kind of a, an art sculpture piece that, that's, it's a C. And so it'll start to be kind of this place that you can meet, you can take photos, you can start to create that, that buzz, um, through a social community. And I think that's really important, how this building starts to connect with today's students. The backside that faces the campus itself, you can see the large kind of camouflaged boxes out towards the back. Those are the banquet hall and the boardroom and kind of the terrace that's over there on the left-hand side of the image. We have the student entry and balcony here for the game room. And then really, we're starting to, this, what you see getting here is modeled from what we're starting to play with on the site and how it's starting to relate. This will look much different next time you see it, but it is being developed, and I think it's starting to really shape and have a dynamic form. We can start to play with the materiality of this and relate it back to not only the context of this building, but the rest of campus, and I think you'll really, really like how this is starting to come out. And obviously, the building we're in now, the emerging technologies building, is going to play a huge impact in the materiality of the student union. It's its neighbor, it's kind of the first step in the redevelopment of this campus. And so the decisions that were made on that building will heavily be influenced on the
We had a visioning meeting with the design committee. We were team with Kessler, they were doing the interior design of this project. And in this visioning meeting, you can see by the wall, there's over 100 pictures up there, and we call that precedent imagery. And people come in and we give them yellow, red, and green dots. And green represents, you know, put that dot on the picture you like, the red that you don't like, and yellow that you can go either way. So it was a good session to learn kind of how people were leaning, what kind of materials and colors and finishes they liked. A little bit of student philosophy, designing philosophy, against more imagery. And here's a few slides coming up here, and that's just on the images that have green dots on them. So you can see there's a lot of natural materials, used, stone, wood, dark, rich heel. And of course, Dr. Farmer likes greenery within the building, so we'll see how we can bring something like that inside. And there's some of the materials that we had on the table that people could, you know, pick up and feel and look at. And we're still selecting the materials, but as you can see here, very natural wood, dark tones that are rich. Last but not least, scheduled right now, you can see we're in schematic design, we're finishing that up, and we'll have a design development. So the construction document is going to be complete with drawings by October. Then that will go into bidding for a construction manager at risk. They'll receive bids, and construction will be complete by the summer of 2027. Sorry, architects are long-winded. Any questions?
How many total square feet we got?
About 116,000. And that will fluctuate too, as we get pricing and to see where that sits.
If I may comment while we have our representatives here from Huckabee and I saw John Jones from Imperial come in too. This beautiful facility that we're currently occupying, Mark recently presented on that at a national facilities conference. Mark, can you give like a 10-second comment about what that was?
Texas Association of Physical Plan Administrators, the conference we went to, Dr. Farmer and I, and we both did a presentation on the past, current, and future work here at the college. Maybe about 75 people that attended, but it was very well done. Dr. Farmer was natural, getting nervous, but very well.
Well, I also want to comment that we've been very pleased with both Imperial and Huckabee. Now, twice over, you've been on time and under budget, and that's exactly what we look for in this next building, on time, under budget.
Yes, sir.
Couple of important words.
Very important. We watch that very carefully.
Anything else, Dr. Farmer?
No, sir.
Think of, any member of the board have any questions or comments at this point? Thank you both very much. It's, we're excited. This is, this is something we're really looking forward to.
It's an honor. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Glad to have you.
Mr. Chair, last item, item 6D. We have Dr. eBay here to present the findings of our recent onsite visit by the Office of Civil Rights. And so, Dr. eBay, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, President Farmer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board of trustees. I come here to share with you just briefly of what happened during this visit. This visit here has some historical perspective behind it. I will start off by showing you the dates, as you can see, between October 16th and April 18th. We have the facilities audit by Park Hill. Park Hill is the architectural firm that was hired to conduct the audit. They were recommended to us by THECB, the co-board. And then on October 29th through the thirtieth, we had the onsite visit by members of the THECB Office of Civil Rights. Historically, each year, THECB conducts onsite civil rights visits to so many colleges, especially colleges of career and technical education programs, to look at their programs as well as their facilities and support services they provide to their students. This is mandated by the Civil Rights Office because we receive federal grants, like Pell Grants and other grants that we receive that are federal grants, so this is mandated. And of course, this type of visit takes place every 20 to 35 years. Because in the state of Texas, we have 52 community colleges. And of the 52 community colleges, every year, they choose two to visit. We happen to be one of the two they chose last year. The purpose of the compliance review was to determine post-secondary institutional compliance with the following Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972, and Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973. You all know what those entails. It entails disability, busy success, and all those things. And then, the facilities audits happened first. When they came in, they were in a group of three, three teams. The architectural team, one, team two, and the civil engineers. So this year, at the buildings they visited on October 16th, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., they were conducting audits. I'm not going to cover the building, but you can, as you can see, they went through the whole campus to visit. They were independent, they walked around on their own, they knew before their arrival, before their visit to Weatherford College, we had provided them all the information, several packages of information they demanded. So I will be naming some of my teams in the moment. They were all instrumental in gathering all the information necessary to make this happen. So we did our pre-assignment before they arrived. So they went through all these buildings, and then of course, the civil teams were responsible for the parking lots and the outdoor catering. Then, on Thursday, October 17th, from 7:30 to 3:00 p.m., they were right here at Weatherford College and from 8:00 to 6:00 p.m. at West County Campus. And again, they went through everything they could see within the buildings and the parking lots and everything within our facilities. And then the following day, October 18th, they had the bachelor meeting, the architectural team. They had a bachelor meeting from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. with the Office of Disability to wrap up their findings and their decision-making. Then, the onsite visit by the THECB Office of Civil Rights, this happened the first day of October 29th. When they arrived, they had an interview, an interest interview with the executive leadership, President Farmer and his cabinet, at 8:30 a.m. And then followed by a series of interviews with members of the Weatherford College, staff, faculty, students. As you can see, right there, all those individuals were interviewed by the team when they were here, from 9:15 to 12:00 p.m. And after lunch, they proceeded to go to West Camp. And again, at West County Campus, Dean McCrufflin was very helpful in guiding us through the whole place. I will come to that in a moment. But then, the next item right here, the following day, October 18th, they continue with their interview process. They met all these individuals within the campus again, and we had lunch at 12:15 p.m. And then at, from 1:30 to 4:00 p.m., we took them around the campus for campus tour, and then they had an exit interview at 4:30 p.m. The visit was concluded at that time. Now, let's go to the actual findings. Why are they here? What did they find? The THECB Office of Civil Rights, their site findings shows that we need the following corrective action plan. And all this corrective action plan, from one to eight, we have met all of them and sent a report back to them, except item number four, which is the physical accessibility for students with disabilities. This year is about the facilities, and that's where we are going to have some further discussion in a moment. Let me, if I'm going too fast, I know your time is brief, I'm just rushing this very fast here. The next item here is the facilities audit. The facilities audit, these are some of the findings. They said they replaced, replacing the older buildings. Numerous barriers they found in those old buildings. And then, of course, in some of the other old buildings as well, they found items within there that are not accessible to disabled individuals. So they went to all those. And then, of course, the challenging topography. We love our campus because of the topography. However, they find a lot of difficulties, large vertical distances between buildings, which I think, looking from what was presented before me here, that will correct, with the new building, that will correct most of these problems that we're cited for. And then, of course, the whole barrier removal items are classified into three. We have category one, two, and three. With category one to be completed within one year, category two within two years, and category three to be completed within five years. Now, here comes the big one, the cost. Park Hill Architectural Fund, their invoice was $40,974, which we have paid. We paid that using part of the grant from Park Hill's grant. That's how we paid that. And then the rest of the items, category one, two, three, as you can see, every one of those items have a contingency. If you remove those 25% contingency plans, that number will drastically reduce. But let me take, I have a package in front of you. The package is tagged in gray and pink. If you bear with me, if you open up to the gray area, and you will see right here that in that page where the categories are, you will see where they have category one, category two, what it all entails, and category three. You have those right in front of you. Then, of course, the rest of the pages that follows are all the findings and the pictures associated with the findings. So you can peruse those at your time. But then, let's flip to the pink page, the pink area, the cost summary, cost summary. If you flip to that page and then open it up to the next page, you will see to your right where you have the category one, category two, and category three items. And as you look at that, you will see where we have faculty building for $1.4 million. $1.4 million, that is the faculty offices, which of course, if we, with the new building, we demolish that building, that will cause that disruption. And then, we have the library. The library is probably what's going to cost us a little bit more money because they want us to put an elevator. And here, it is quoted for $625,000. However, they revised it a little bit later. We, if we shop around, we could find it for less than $400,000. So most of what you see on this page, on that page right there, category one, we have finished all those, we have completed everything on category one, we have met that. Category two, we are fast-tracking those as well, almost getting them done. Category three, some of them are being addressed right now. But I'm going to have John Stack. John Stack is right here, and he is working diligently to meet all these requirements by saving us a lot of money. He has done tremendous amount of jobs. I don't know all what he has done so far, but from the package he sent me, he seems like he is way ahead of track. What happens is that for every completion, we have to report those back to the Office of Civil Rights. So he and I will be sitting down to get all those numbers together, while Dr. Cantrell and her team and the president executive cabinet will work at Georgia Logistics and fit them into the capital budget. Again, we have three to five years for category three items, which is where most of the expenses lie. At this point, let me flip to this page to see if you have any questions for me. Questions? Sorry, that was very fast. I have to move very fast because I.
So I have a question.
Yes, please.
All the category three items, are those required to be completed within five years? Or is that just a guideline that they would like you to?
That's the guideline, yes. We can always extend the time. We have to can write them and let them know that, yes, we need some more time because of councilless.
So all of those items, do we anticipate doing? Or will some of those be taken care of with new construction?
With the new construction, a lot of those things will be taken care of, especially the areas of the parking lot, the topography, connecting buildings to buildings, making it accessible to disabled individuals. Those ones will be corrected with the new building.
So do you have any idea what portion of that $6.3 million will be satisfied with new construction?
That I will be meeting with Dr. Cantrell and John Stack to discuss that in a row of four.
Well, academic, that would be going down, about a million five.
Can I say something, Dr. eBay?
Yes, please.
Do you mind? But I will say, Don Holden.
But I will say, Don Holden, we do need to be cautious going forward as we do new construction, because some of the slope of the parking lot that was just recently built was not correct. So we just paid to have that redone. So we need to make sure that when we do new construction, it is done correctly. It was just a slope error. It was minor, but some of what Mr. Stark just had redone, we had to pay to have redone. So even though it's a small thing, it's, it didn't meet standard and we had to have it redone. So a lot of that, a lot of that can be, a lot of that cost will be covered under new construction. But we just need to be careful that the new construction is actually covering what it needs to cover.
Thank you very much for that. That is very relevant. That's very, very important. Surprisingly, the funds from defects in the softball stadium and the concession stand, which the, the architectural group or the construction group that, you know, that build those concession stands should have known during the time of construction that they have to abide by certain standard based on these civil rights rules or laws, which they did, and we have to just start fixing them again. But, and again, if you look in the package again, again, on that page to the left, on the pink side to the left of it, you will see that the new buildings are all good. This building is perfect. Durant Hall, perfect. They just want everything to be, to follow the normal process, the, the guidelines. At this time, let me just thank my, my team, Dr. Pandevi Yaski, Dr. Ido Yaga, Executive Dean McLaughlin, Adam Finley, Don Cardin, D.B. Parkins, Chief Biggert Gery, John Stack, Karen Wells, my assistant, Bill Alexander, Nora Carson, and of course, President Farmer, for trusting me with this responsibility, as well as my team for trusting me to do the job with them. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments about any of this?
If I may, Mr. Chair, I would like to compliment Dr. eBay. This was a challenging task and one which he and his committee performed very well. So thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I believe that takes us down now to item number seven on the imposed agenda. Mr. Baker, do you have some announcements for us?
We do. We have some upcoming events to tell you about, board members. First pitch was about 20 minutes ago for our baseball postseason series over here at Williams Ballpark. They're playing today and tomorrow at 1 o'clock, and if necessary, Saturday at 1 o'clock against El Paso. Commencement, I'm sure you've all received communications about commencement, but again, at the Fort Worth Convention Center, that is May the 19th. The start time is 6 o'clock, and I know our student services team has been working very hard to make that a tremendous event yet again. We have a very active summer theater production. There's three or four different productions this summer. This coming month will be the culmination of the Teen Musical Theater Camp, May 30th through June the 1st. And then, we have a special alumni mixer coming up on Thursday night, June the 5th. And we're having that alumni mixer at Durant Hall, up in the lounge area and the balcony. And board members, you're all welcome to come to that. We'd love to see you there.
Thank you very much, Brent. Appreciate it. Bring us down to item number eight, where we will go into closed session on real property matters and employee matters. And the time now is 1:21 PM. We will go into closed sessions.
Okay, the time now is 2:05 PM still on May the 8th, 2025. Continuation of our meeting today. We have concluded our closed section session with regard to matters of real property and matters of employment as are addressed in item number nine and item number 10. We do not have any action items under either one of those posted item agendas today and therefore we're down to adjournment. Do I have a motion?
No, man.
A second or a little bit. All in favor, we are unanimous. We are adjourned.
Hey, we've got reserve.